Good evening. We'd like to call the order, a special meeting of the Community Unit School District 300 Board of Education for this evening, October 2nd, 2025. Madam Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Burkett.
Present.
Fiorentino. Lamarcus, present. Lindmark.
Present.
McKenday.
Present.
Malia.
Present.
Zettler.
Present.
The board, six board members present.
I would ask that we all rise to say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Public, for which it stands, a nation, under God, indivisible.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Colleen O'Keefe. I am the district's in-house legal counsel. And if you have attended one of these meetings in the past or observed one of these meetings online, you probably would have noticed that the board president generally presides over the meeting. And that's because board policy states that it is one of the responsibilities of the board president to preside over an open meeting as they are convened throughout the school year. Based on what we're going to be discussing tonight and the high level of emotions that are involved in the discussion, the board has asked that I help facilitate this evening's meeting. But in order to do so, I'm going to have to ask the board for a motion to suspend their rules to allow counsel to preside over the meeting only for this evening's meeting, the special meeting on October 2nd.
So moved.
Second.
Madam Secretary, can you call the roll?
Zettler.
Aye.
McKenday.
Aye.
Malia.
Aye.
Lindmark.
Aye.
Lamarcus, aye. Burkett.
Aye.
Motion passes, 6-0.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. There have been no changes to the agenda this evening. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Madam Secretary, please take the roll.
McKenday.
Aye.
Lamarcus. Aye. Lindmark.
Aye.
Zettler. Malia. Malia.
Aye.
And Burkett.
Aye.
Motion passes, 6-0.
Casey, I'm gonna skip, I'm gonna skip this part. Okay. I want to just begin this evening by kind of laying out what the agenda looks like so everybody here knows what to expect, including the board. As many of you know, if not all of you know, the board did have a regularly scheduled meeting last week. At that meeting, it began a discussion on a recent social media post made by the board's president. Also at that meeting, I think about probably 25, approximately 25 members of the public spoke at that meeting expressing their thoughts and concerns regarding the post. Since that meeting, the board has had the opportunity to process what the community has shared with them, both at that meeting and through the emails that the board has continued to receive. As was explained at that meeting, the topic of a social media post made by any board member is not a topic appropriate for closed session. As a result, this board has not discussed that topic since Tuesday. It has now reached a consensus that it would like to continue that discussion. And that's why we're here this evening at this, at this special meeting. This is the first time they will be discussing the topic since Tuesday as a group. It's my understanding that there are board members here tonight that plan to make statements. And hopefully they will also engage in a robust discussion, ask questions of each other, and discuss the issue in its entirety. As you probably have noticed when we took the roll, Mr. Fiorentino is not present this evening. That's due to a previous engagement. He could not be here with us tonight. He was aware that this meeting was being scheduled. And although, of course, he would have preferred to be a part of this meeting and participate in the meeting, he understood the board's desire to move forward with this special meeting, including during his absence. He did provide me with a statement that he would like me to read during the discussion portion of this evening, and I will do so as we get into that portion of the agenda. After discussion, we are going to open it up for public participation or public comment. We have many more public participants than we did on Tuesday's meeting. So the board has, per policy, reserved up to two hours for public comment. I envision that that full two hours is probably going to be filled tonight. It is important to the board that we hear you and that we engage the community and ask you to be a part of this meeting. And that's your, the public participation is your venue to do so. Following public participation, the board has reserved time for a second discussion. That would be to make any final comments, engage in final discussion, possibly have discussion on what they heard during public comment before they move on to the action items. There are two action items on the agenda this evening. The first is an action item for removal of board president, and the second is for censure of a board member. If you were present at last week's meeting, or you had the opportunity to view the meeting online, external legal counsel who was present and participated at that meeting explained that those really are the only two avenues available to the board to take action with respect to this matter. I have been privy to the emails that the board has continued to receive up until, you know, minutes before this meeting. And I do want to just remind the public, it's a continued ask through email, that Mrs. Zettler either be fired or removed permanently from her seat. That is not an option available to this board. The Illinois School Code is the statute that governs the operation of school boards in Illinois, and that is not an option available to the board pursuant to school code. That ability is reserved for the regional office of super, excuse me, Regional Office of Education Superintendent, and we are part of the Kane County Regional Office of Education. So that is the person or body that would be capable of making that determination. So that is not an action item on the agenda for this evening. As you see, as you may have noticed, the rules of decorum came up previously, and I asked Casey to kind of skip over that. If you've been part of this meeting in the past, there are standard rules of decorum that the board president generally reads. I'm going to briefly summarize them and then make an ask of everyone who's here tonight. The rules of decorum simply ask that everyone present remain in their seats, they be respectful when others are talking, they listen, and they avoid interruption. These rules exist so the board can conduct its meetings in an orderly fashion. The board is about to engage in a robust discussion on a topic that could potentially lead to the removal of an officer from her position or the censure of a board member. This, of course, is a very heavy and important topic. During this discussion, which I hope is robust, they may say things you do not agree with, and that's okay. You don't have to agree. But what I do ask is that you give them the opportunity to discuss the matter in its entirety, that you do not interject or interrupt. You will then have the opportunity to participate in public participation. This is not going to be an easy or comfortable conversation for anybody up here on the dais. Please, please reserve your comments for public participation. During public participation, you also may hear things that you do not agree with. I again ask that you do not interrupt speakers as they are participating in public comment. Doing so does not allow the board to fully hear everyone here that wants to make a statement. Additionally, we may need to stop the meeting or end the meeting. It's important that we do not interrupt each other, and we act civil here this evening. In the worst of situations, we do have our, we do have police in the room, police officers in the room, and we have a safety officer. If you become, or if someone becomes a continued disruption, you may be asked to leave the meeting this evening. But we really hope it does not get there. We know that this is a difficult topic. We know emotions are high. We know everyone in this room feels strongly about the issue. All that we ask is that we come together to have a productive, civil meeting. Does the board have any questions before we jump into discussion? Okay, and we'll move into board discussion. I know that there were several members at the last meeting that did not have the opportunity to either make a statement or comment on what they heard during public participation. So it was my thought that we start with those members. I don't know if there's anyone specific that would like to start. Mrs. Lamarcus would like to begin.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. Before I get into my actual statement, I want to state briefly why some of us thought it was important to have this special meeting. The impetus is simply to acknowledge, move through, and possibly act on the outpouring of public commentary we have experienced since the initial Facebook posts of Ms. Zettler and Mr. Fiorentino. While we all have our individual thoughts on what has transpired over the last three weeks, I believe we all have the same goal in mind, and that is to get this board back to a place where we can function productively and wholly as soon as possible. This is also what is best for the district overall. To begin this evening, I first want to say that I did have a statement prepared for the last meeting, but decided in the moment not to share it based upon what had transpired. Thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts with you this evening. As someone who has spent the majority of the last 10 years leading nonprofits, as well as being a board member, I will openly admit that there have been countless times when I have had to bite my tongue, zip my lip, and not say or do something I really wanted to. For me, this has been one of the most difficult aspects of being in these roles. Because even though these are roles I have chosen to pursue, being committed and dedicated to the work these roles entail does not preclude or disallow me from being who I am, someone who has strong opinions and thoughts about all sorts of things. What I have learned through all my work, and what also brings me the greatest sense of peace, is the fact that views are more, are not as important as people. Differences do not have to equate to division. Like many of you, I'm sure, I have family and friends who have a different ideology from my own. Here is what I know is true. I can be stealth in my beliefs and still respect and even love those who are different from me. I can fulfill my role as a board member with both integrity and authenticity. I can do board work utilizing my experience and my compassion without the influence of the latest national debate blurring my focus and dedication to this district. When I saw Ms. Zettler's Facebook post on her private page, I perceived it as her sharing a growth moment, one in which she expressed a raw, initial thought, and then shared why her perspective had grown and changed, based on the article that she shared by author Qasim Rashid. I then read the article and found that it really resonated with me. I proceeded to share the article from Qasim's page with my own commentary on my personal Facebook page. I shared the article as a private post on my personal Facebook page, and so for the sake of transparency, I want to share my commentary that preceded the article. It was as follows. Quote, "This is exactly how I feel right now. Thank you to the friend who posted this too. I needed to read this. We all do." Mr. Rashid, end quote. "Mr. Rashid's article was a beautiful, honest, and raw take on complex feelings many of us are navigating, and I would share it a thousand more times if I thought it could change the hearts and minds of more people." Now I'd like to move on to why I believe we're all here this evening. But first, let me be clear. I fully support Ms. Zettler's right to post what she posted on her personal Facebook page. Do I wish she had used different commentary before the article? Yes, I do. Do I believe she meant to offend or upset her Facebook friends with her commentary? No, I do not. Taken in full context and in its original format, I do not understand how her Facebook post could be a catalyst for the disruption that has occurred. However, I understand that it doesn't matter that I don't understand or agree with the reaction to her post. I have a responsibility to listen to and consider everyone's views. To all the people who have shared their thoughts about it, I want to say I hear you and I respect your right to share your thoughts. I wish we could all learn to express our views, however, with civility and a baseline of mutual human respect. My perspective did admittedly change after the September 23rd meeting. I will publicly say now what I have already said to Ms. Zettler privately. I was deeply disappointed by the statement she made at that meeting. Choosing to make a statement that, in my opinion, was incendiary added fervor to what was already an emotionally charged issue. That action did not reflect effective compassionate leadership. As I said a few minutes ago, sometimes, especially as leaders, we have to put aside our own interests and our quest to be right, and do what is necessary to bridge divides and ultimately get back to the work at hand. Further, it is my opinion that a school board, a nonpartisan entity by design and for good reason, is not an appropriate platform for continued discourse and heated debate regarding politically charged topics that aren't directly involved or adjacent to the actual work of the board. As someone who admirably acknowledges all the work Ms. Zettler has done for many years and in many capacities to pursue the best interest for our district, this brings me to a very difficult place. Clearly, sometimes our actions warrant responses and ramifications that we cannot predict. For an example of this, Google Coldplay couple. For me, to be comfortable with the decision I make this evening, I must peel away everything else and solely look at the board as its own entity. I have to ask myself, can Ms. Zettler be an effective leader for this board going forward? How can the board regain our ability to focus on our board work? Having learned from this experience, how can the board be better equipped in the future to deal with similar issues? These are questions I have contemplated over the last week. I have had hours and hours of one-on-one discussions with fellow board members, including Nancy and Steve. My family and a few trusted friends have been my sounding board as I worked through all of this. Ultimately, I am resolved to do what I believe is the best thing at this time for our board. And let me state very clearly, however I vote this evening, will not and does not entail capitulation to either political side. How I feel politically cannot and should not weigh into my decision about how our board can move forward to do our work and best represent all our constituents. I encourage anyone who wants to continue political discourse to do so. People need to speak up now more than ever, and there are lots of ways people can engage in that realm. I'm sure I will continue to do so myself. But any of that is outside of this boardroom and does not impact my service as a school board member. It is my hope that just like in other times when we have had what seems to be a chasm of differing opinions between us, that we all can listen and learn from each other. Again, understanding that differences do not have to equate to division. Division makes us weak. Differences can help us grow, even thrive. I choose the latter. Again, thank you for letting me share these thoughts with you this evening.
Is there any other board member that'd like to make a statement or participate in discussion?
I can go next.
Okay.
Good evening. Thank you for coming. Four months into my four-year term, I remain committed to the shared goal of doing what is best for our entire school district. I began this term optimistic about building a productive working relationship based on mutual respect with all board members and the administration. I acknowledge that recent events involving two of our experienced board members, President Nancy Zettler and Stephen Fiorentino, have significantly challenged this foundation. Tonight, my focus is on the actions and resulting impact related to Board President Zettler. I want to begin by expressing my gratitude for everyone's patience during this difficult time. My relationship with Ms. Zettler spans several years and extends beyond this boardroom. I consider her a friend. And I deeply admire her longstanding commitment to public education and her fierce advocacy for our students. Her legacy includes successfully leading the effort to pass two referendums to build and remodel schools, and fighting against the Sears Economic Development Area Extension, which secured millions in additional tax revenue for our district. This is the legacy I hope endures. We are considering a motion to censure Nancy President Zettler for the disruption caused by her recent personal social media post. I believe in the fundamental right of every citizen, including Ms. Zettler, to freedom of expression under the First Amendment. While we may disagree with a post, find it ill-advised, or believe it missed the mark, these rights are protected. My position is that if the post in question had been made on any of the official or unofficial district-related social media pages, or on her public-facing campaign page, I would support a censure given the disruption it has caused the district. However, to my knowledge, this was a post made within her personal social media space and did not occur within the D-300 social media community. While the post was careless, given her leadership role, and despite the intention for it to be private, it is clear that nothing truly, is truly private on social media, I acknowledge that Ms. Zettler took accountability for her initial reaction within that same post. I will not be supporting the censure of Nancy Zettler this evening. The electorate has the ultimate right to hold any elected official accountable at the ballot box. They overwhelmingly elected her to a four-year term in April of 2023, and they will have the opportunity to decide who sits in her seat in 2027. Concerns Regarding the Board Presidency. The selection of the board president is an internal board matter, meaning we, the elected board members, govern ourselves and elect officers to represent us. The board president's primary function is to ensure effective governance, and it is in this capacity that I find some of the recent conduct problematic. The decision to remove a board member from a leadership position is solely based on their capacity to execute the duties of that office. Specifically, I have observed the following concerning behaviors in the role of board president during the resulting turmoil. Difficulty in Enforcing Decorum. As the presiding officer, the board president is responsible for setting and enforcing the standards of conduct during meetings. At the last meeting, I believe the president was unable to consistently enforce the rules of decorum, which contributed to increased disruptions and a less productive environment. Absence of Deeskalation. Effective leadership, especially during times of high public division, requires the ability to lower the temperature. After reviewing President Zettler's statement and watching the meeting footage, I did not observe the necessary qualities of deeskalation that are essential for leading, for a leader facing significant community tension. Lack of Composure. A board president must maintain an unimpeachable level of composure and impartiality while presiding. I personally observed a lack of composure, including one instance of eye-rolling. And reports from others with better vantage point confirmed that the president's body language and facial expressions during public participation were not consistent with the neutrality and professionalism expected of a leader. It is for this reason, and for this reason alone, that I do not believe Nancy Zettler can effectively leave the Board of Education at this time. This decision has nothing to do with her initial post. Again, this decision has absolutely nothing to do with her initial post on social media and everything to do with how she managed the resulting situation as the board's presiding officer. A Call for Community Reflection. We are all human, and we all make mistakes. I hope that each of us is measured not by our missteps, but by our capacity to learn and grow from them. I am disheartened by how the local social media discourse has become a persistent source of division and hostility. This constant online conflict, often fueled by bots, fake profiles, and external agitators, is fundamentally counterproductive to the educational vision and mission of our district. While I cannot control individual actions, I urge every community member to take a moment of honest reflection on their personal contributions to this online discourse and the impact it has on our community. My sincere hope is that we can collectively move past the cycle of unproductive argument and redirect that energy toward working with our exceptional teachers and staff to improve student outcomes. If the discourse is to continue to be political and divisive in nature, I kindly ask that it remains separate from the board, the administration, and our schools. Thank you all for being here. Let us conduct ourselves with mutual respect this evening. When adults are focused only on winning, it is our children who ultimately lose. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board members?
I had prepared something to say in the middle of the night before I left for work this morning. I didn't really like how it turned out because I hadn't had much sleep. So I'm just gonna kind of freestyle it, and it'll keep it shorter. My original support for the post that Ms. Zettler made originally stemmed from some news that I received a few days earlier that week. I think I might have shared it with maybe two people up here. The article she shared really spoke to what I was dealing with at that time and still am. I know we all have personal problems. We all have lives outside of our careers, our families, everything. We juggle a lot. And that is something that I was dealing with at that time, and I still am. I still will be in a couple months. That post just resonated with me. I was gonna say something last week, but I decided not to because it was fairly decisive, divisive talk. And it was better for me to just let everyone say their piece. I listened closely to what everyone said. I actually took notes on what people were saying. And I read every single email that has come into my inbox as of 4:30 this morning before I left for work. I did not get a chance to check before I came in. I'm sure there's more. But I listened to, I read every single email, and I listened to everything everyone had to say. And I take it seriously. Your opinion is important. And I appreciate everyone that's here tonight. Dr. Smith, thank you for all your help over the last couple of weeks, and thank you to your team also, especially for being here tonight. Sorry you guys have to stay late. And I'm gonna cut it short so that way you guys can go home.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'll go ahead. I'd also like to say thank you to the community for making your thoughts known on this matter. Thank you for being here tonight. And thank you for your patience as we work through this incredibly difficult situation. Last meeting, I had the opportunity to hear from legal counsel, fellow board members, and the community. It was a critically important step in navigating the situation that we find ourselves in. I spent a tremendous amount of time reflecting on the situation and the impact it had on the work, has on the work of the board, as well as the larger D-300 community. I want to be extremely clear on a few points here. One, violence in any form is unacceptable and has no place in civil society. Two, freedom of speech is a fundamental right that we all share. Ms. Zettler, along with the rest of the board and everyone in this room, absolutely has the right to express themselves freely. Serving as an elected official does not mean that we forfeit our rights to express ourselves in our private lives. And three, for me, this is not so much about Ms. Zettler's original post. Any action I might take tonight is based completely on her reaction to the situation that that post caused and the statement that she shared during our September 23rd meeting. I was shocked and disappointed by her statement. This was her chance to refocus the board and the community back to our shared goal of serving all D-300 students. Instead of taking this opportunity to try and bring us back to this goal, Ms. Zettler made the disappointing choice to use language that was politically divisive and offensive to people within our community, and dismissive of their concerns about this matter. Ms. Zettler's response to the situation was not what I expected from her as our leader. To me, the mark of a good leader is how you conduct yourself during To me, the mark of a good leader is how you conduct yourself during difficult situations and times of division. Leaders should demonstrate genuine empathy by actively listening and seeking to understand all perspectives, even opposing ones. As members of the Board of Education, we are elected to serve as nonpartisans. While we each have every right to our own political views outside of this room, I strongly believe that political commentary and the use of partisan language should not come from board members while we are serving in our official capacity, and most definitely not from behind the dais during one of our meetings. In my opinion, Nancy's statement crossed this line. I believe that the Board can't maintain integrity if we do not hold our own board members accountable for their behavior. So I've been wrestling with this question, you know, since that last meeting. How do we, as a Board, do that? I don't feel it's the Board's place, and obviously we cannot and should not overturn the will of the community's voters, who have elected and re-elected Nancy to serve as a board member. Nancy has every right to continue serving in that role, and her history of dedicated service to District 300 is well-recognized. I sincerely hope she will continue to contribute to the benefit of all of our students. One of the Illinois Association of School Board's founding principles for governance for board members is that the Board take responsibility for itself. Our collective and individual conduct must always support the Board's ability to govern effectively. Ultimately, I believe that as a Board, we must do what is necessary to return the focus of the Board to all the important work that is ahead of us and to the shared goal of serving all D-300 students.
Thank you. Tola, would you like to make a statement?
Good evening. Last meeting, I think I shared my point on my liking the post today. I'm gonna focus on the topic at hand. I'm here tonight to address concerns about leadership that I believe warrant serious consideration by this Board. I have seen problematic leadership qualities from two individuals, Nancy Zettler and Stephen Fiorentino, that reduces productivity of the Board. Good governance requires the Board be responsible for itself. The Board collectively, as well as individually, takes full responsibility for Board activity and behavior. I want to be clear from the outset. I firmly support every individual's First Amendment right to express their views, including our Board President. Personal political opinions are protected, and that's a cornerstone of our democracy that I deeply value. However, leadership positions come with responsibilities that extend beyond personal rights. Our Board President must be able to unite our community, lower the temperature when conflicts arise, and model the kind of respectful discourse we expect in our schools. What troubles me is not the existence of political views, but the lack of leadership we've witnessed the last few days. First was the volatile social media post that predictably sparked significant community division. While the President had every right to make the post, it created disruption that required leadership to resolve. Second, and more concerning, at our last meeting, the President had an opportunity to calm tensions and bring our community together. Instead, the response further agitated those with opposing views rather than seeking common ground. Third, there has been a refusal to acknowledge how these actions have impacted our school community or to take any steps toward reconciliation. Effective leadership requires judgment about when and how to exercise our rights, especially in roles that represent diverse communities. It requires the ability to de-escalate conflict, not inflame it, and it requires the humility to recognize when our actions, however well-intentioned, have caused harm to the community we serve. Our students deserve a Board that models constructive dialogue and unity. Our community deserves leadership that can bridge divides rather than widen them. I'm not asking the President to surrender free speech rights. I'm asking this Board to consider whether the judgment and temperament we've witnessed reflect the leadership our district need at this critical time. At this time, what we need is good leadership in Board governance and productivity and a leader who has the discernment to know when to lower the temperature. We need someone who can lead by example. Even though we don't have the leader we need at this point, I do not want this to take away from any past accomplishments. Nancy is someone I consider a friend. She has no ounce of hate in her bone. She's someone that values public education and does what it takes to achieve that in this community. She has been a valuable asset too, on many critical occasions, from the Sears EDA Extension Advocate to referendum, and has served this community for decades. She has great value for diversity and works tirelessly in making sure that all students have a voice. Let's all understand that whatever the outcome of tonight's meeting is, it's not a win for anyone but our students and community. Let's respect everyone's First Amendment rights tonight. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. If you don't mind, I'll read Mr. Fiorentino's statement before you.
I'm gonna read a statement shared with me by Mr. Fiorentino. Dear fellow board members, D-300 staff, and community, I wanted to start by sharing my disappointment and frustration of not being present for this important special meeting. I had a long-planned family event that could not be rescheduled. I thank all of you that continue to share your opinions and suggestions and potential course of action. Like many of you, I was highly disappointed and disturbed that when Nancy Zettler had the opportunity to show some empathy and remorse, she decided not to and reacted to the contrary. Her statement included no apology or retraction and further upset many present at the last meeting and watching online. After careful consideration, I continue to believe the best course for this Board, our staff, and the community is for Mrs. Zettler to step away. If she continues to be unresponsive or defiant, I recommend the Board holds her accountable by removing her as President, including all committee leadership positions, and an official censure. I promise to do my part to gain back the trust of our community and represent all. I look forward to seeing how this Board will act to restore respect, civility, and transparency. It is imperative that we return to focusing on teaching, learning, and our strategic plan. Sincerely, Steve Fiorentino.
With that statement being read, Mrs. Zettler, would you like to say anything?
I'll wait till after public participation.
Any further discussion before we move into public participation? Okay, then we're gonna move to the next item on the agenda, which is public participation. I do, let me pull up the list, please hold. We have had 39 people sign up for public participation this evening. Each person will be called individually to the podium. We ask that you state your name and your relationship to the district. Each person has been provided guidelines for public participation. As a reminder, minors must be accompanied by a parent or guardian. The Board does not engage in dialogue with speakers, and comments are to be limited to three minutes for up to a total of two hours of public participation. We want to note that the Open Meetings Act provides any person the opportunity to address the Board under the adopted public participation policy. That being said, the Board would like to advise the public that they will not consider statements read during public participation that are not authored by the reader to be credible unless the Board has previously received the statement in writing from the author. Additionally, the author should indicate that he or she has granted the public participant the authority to read the statement. With that, we're going to ask the first public speaker to step forward, which is Mike Berry.
Good evening. My name is Mike Berry. I am a community member and taxpayer inside of District 300. I would like to start my statement by explaining a little bit what the First Amendment of the United States does guarantee us and how much I respect that right. It does guarantee us the freedom to say whatever we want. It does, and that's a wonderful thing. And it guarantees freedom from prosecution. It does not, however, guarantee freedom from accountability. When Nancy made a Facebook post that I interpreted as the celebration of the assassination of a political opponent, it was irresponsible, divisive, and inflammatory. When she had the opportunity to apologize or show remorse for her poor judgment, she doubled down on her statement during the board meeting on September 23. Her complete refusal to acknowledge any wrongdoing in this matter has not only placed many of the students in this district in danger, it is a slap in the face to the Illinois Educator Code of Ethics and the Illinois Association of School Board's Code of Conduct. Nancy's comments are in clear violation of her oath and would be grounds for removal from the Board, in my opinion. Any board member who votes for Nancy tonight to remain as President and to not be censured is complicit in creating an environment of danger for our students. The financial implications of her action have also been severe. Over the last several weeks, district staff have had to spend their time responding to emails, fielding phone calls, and fulfilling Freedom of Information Act requests. She has also incurred legal fees that I'm sure are very substantial. This is not a responsible use of district funds, and it has caused a major disruption to the education of 23,000 students. She has also opened the district to an immense financial liability related to lawsuits. Any student who is attacked or retaliated against in any way by a student or teacher and references karma would be open and subject for this district to be sued. Nancy's refusal to resign shows that she does not care about this district or its students. Nancy only cares about Nancy. I strongly encourage the Board to do what's right for this district and the community as a whole, and censure and vote to remove her as the President of the School Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next participant is Melissa Reisavich.
Reisavich.
Sorry.
And again, I think you guys already know where I stand on this one. I find it very ironic. First of all, I have two children in D-300 schools. I have two sisters who are D-300 teachers. My sister-in-law teaches an Aurora group. I'm a D-300 alum. I find it very ironic that I personally think this is a witch hunt against Nancy by a group of bad actors, people who have personal vengeance against Nancy, and there's a history there. And Mike, I respect your view. I appreciate everything you bring here. But unfortunately, the voters spoke, and the voters unanimously voted for Nancy and for the majority of people on this Board, with the exception of Fiorentino. And this should be left simply to vote. The Trump view and the Kirk views are not popular here. He was not a good man. He was a terrible man. He had nothing but hate speech. Nothing but hate speech, and that is what we're speaking against. Hate speech. He is a misogynistic racist. Racist.
Okay, I'm gonna ask, stop the disruption.
Hate has no home here. I find your irony laughable and absurd. And that's really all I have to say, is just you guys are creating problems where there aren't problems. And I think you're sad you didn't win the election. Too bad, we'll vote.
The next speaker is Ally McPartland.
Hi, guys. I'm Ally McPartland. I'm a parent here in this district. When I sat down to piece together my thoughts before addressing you today, the first thing that I considered was what it must be like to be sitting up there. I do not envy you, and I thank you for your public service. To those of you with whom I have had a relationship outside of this Board, I have never known any of you to back down from your convictions, and I don't expect you to start now. Today, you will be asked to vote your conscience. I hope your conscience will demand that you stand behind the woman that you elected to be your Board President, even in her singular moment of public frustration. We all know Nancy Zettler is tenacious. We all know that people don't always, like, receive her tenacity well, to put it that way. When you faced the kind of vitriol that Nancy has faced, you'd be inhuman if you didn't ever feel angry or defensive, even as a Board member. At some point, we all need grace. I believe that the attributes that make Nancy a fierce advocate for her beliefs outside of this Board are what also make her a fierce advocate for our children in her role on this Board. I want to take a minute to talk about the root of what you have been asked to consider here, which is the cause of the disruption that you must weigh in your decision-making process. In so doing, I believe that you must also consider the way that Mr. Fiorentino has contributed to this disruption. The two cannot be divorced. When Ms. Zettler first posted to social media, she posted a message that should not have garnered criticism at all. In fact, as you acknowledged, several of you responded approvingly to her post, and I thank you for acknowledging that this evening. But when Mr. Fiorentino chose to excoriate her on his public Board member page, he should have known exactly the kind of disruption that would have caused. For more than 15 years, I have volunteered with Nancy Zettler in one capacity or another. We have not always seen eye to eye. But in that time, through no fault of her own, I have seen her treated in abhorrent ways. Whether it's people hating her for running a referendum to raise taxes to build a new school, as one of you mentioned, or parents who vilified her for following the guidance of professional agencies during the pandemic, Nancy has weathered it all, not for the sake of her own reward, but for the sake of our kids. I trust you to not diminish that in the heat of this moment, and after having heard from you, I thank you for proving my faith was not misplaced. Ultimately, your job is to do what is best for our kids, and I am here asking you to prioritize all the ways that Nancy has shown up for our kids and to show our kids that standing up for-
Our next speaker is Jessica Jacob.
My name is Jessica Jacob, and I am a parent in this district. First, I want to recognize the position you're in. These are not easy decisions, and I don't envy the weight of the pressure that has been put on each of you. Serving on this Board has never been simple, but right now, the stakes feel especially high. I want to thank you for your time and energy you've already given to this district, even when it comes at a personal cost. But I also need to remind you respectfully that you didn't run for these seats to do what's easy. The voters who put you here expect you to stand firm when things get messy. They expect you to choose principle over pressure. They expect you to do the hard thing, even when a loud mob demands the opposite. Nancy Zettler deserves your full support. She did nothing unlawful, nothing that made her unfit to serve. The Supreme Court has been crystal clear. Lawful speech does not lose protection just because others twist it or react badly. Punishing her for that would not only be unjust, it would set a dangerous precedent for the district and every elected body beyond it. Plenty of people in this community took no issue with Nancy's statement at the last meeting. She was being attacked, yelled at, her life was previously threatened, and it caused her voice to elevate in order to be heard. Currently, the leadership in this country warrants responses that include truth and strong accountability while still being respectful. This will look differently today, and referring to this as astroturfing is the most appropriate way to refer to it. The real disruption did not come from Nancy's private post. The real disruption came from Steve Fiorentino knowingly amplified it on his public page to the very audience he knew would explode. He stoked outrage, misrepresented facts, and used his position to escalate the issue. This wasn't leadership, it was gasoline on a fire. To ignore that while placing blame on Nancy would be turning the truth upside down. I've heard from countless community members since the last meeting. People who voted for you, who trusted you to be their voice, they saw hate and venom spewed in this room, and they also saw too much silence from this Board. Many are afraid to speak publicly because of the threats and harassment aimed at anyone who stands with Nancy. But make no mistake, the silence does not mean support for removing her, it means fear. And fear is exactly what this angry mob wants to spread. And to be clear, the silence does not mean the community is on their side. In just days, over 500 people added their name to a petition supporting Nancy. This is not a small number, and it shows plainly that the loudest voices in this fight are not the only ones. If you remove Nancy or weaken her position in any way, you are not protecting this district and its children. You're awarding bad-faith- You're wording bad-faced tactics and are telling bullies that if they scream loud enough, they will get their way. This is not the message District 300 should send. When voters take issues with their representatives, there is a place to resolve it, the ballot box.
The next speaker is Emily Boe.
Hello. My name is Emily Boe. I am from Aurora, Illinois. I've been reading about this online, and to be honest, this is the scope of what I know from what was presented online and what I've heard tonight. I have heard many of you say that this was a very good friend of mine, that I've supported her, that she's worked tirelessly in this community, and yet you're throwing her under the bus. You've listened to angry people, rude people, bullies, people holding signs that are disrespectful, snickering, saying rude comments, being disruptive, and I've not seen one of you say something about that. So I can only imagine what she's faced the last meeting, and if she raised her voice and she didn't have a good reaction to that, like, I've never met her, and I'm angry for her. I think that a lot of you should be ashamed of yourselves to have worked side by side with somebody like her and do nothing to stand up for her. Self-care is a real thing, we're all under a lot of pressure. You guys talk about suicidal ideation. I see your sign, I see you, thank you. Thanks. You guys allow people to bully each other in here, and it's disgusting, to be honest. I have a minute and a half more, right? Cool, thanks. For her to apologize for her public post would mean to say, you know, I thought one thing is a knee-jerk reaction because these people are hurting a lot of my friends. The LGBTQ community is being affected, targeted probably by some of the people in this room, if I had to guess. There's a lot of people here, you have a lot of kids in schools who are afraid to walk down the hallways because of these parents, probably, and what these parents are teaching their children at home. And if she is standing up against that, or she rolls her eyes, I'm not sure that we can control what our face does in the face of extreme... Someone said that her life was being threatened. Who is doing something about this? Is anybody silencing them? Is anyone saying like, hey, that's not okay, you're not allowed to say that, you're not allowed to do that? So if she's afraid for her life and she's rolling her eyes because of some of these mean people in here are threatening her, who can blame her? Leadership comes from us grabbing someone's hand and saying, hey, you're not alone. Did anybody do that for her? Did anybody look in her direction, say like, you're okay, this isn't the end of the world?
Next speaker is Phil Chester.
Hello, I'm also from Aurora. I also have just become aware of the situation in the last week, and I feel strongly to support President Zettler. And people already brought up the First Amendment and free speech. Obviously, that's not on the table here, you know, we can have different opinions. And I think that any... I haven't heard any valid reason for her to be removed or censored, given the nature of this situation. I believe that the board should stand behind her and be strong and vote tonight with courage and to not remove her and not censor her.
The next speaker is Brandon Weinhammer.
Hello, my name is Brandon Weinhammer. I grew up in this community, lived here almost my whole life. I went to Newbert, Duney Middle School, graduated from Jacobs. I'm a taxpayer. I want to thank you, Nancy, for the great education my children are now receiving. After the last school board election, I made the decision to pull my children from District 300 and send them to private school. I wanted my kids to get educated, not crammed into overcrowded classrooms and indoctrinated by your radical agenda. I couldn't be happier with the choice, both struggled in public schools, and now they're both consistently getting high honors and awards for community service and Christian leadership. These are future leaders of America. I also want to touch on your character, because this is something that shouldn't be overlooked. Your comment, karma is a dollar sign, I-T-C-H, shows that you have no regard for human life. We all make mistakes, but the fact that you doubled down at the last board meeting and refused to give an apology is further proof that you are not a leader. Your comment promotes violence, and you need to resign. Do the right thing, our community deserves better. Patrick, Leslie, and Tola, you are no better for supporting what she said online. Erica Kirk forgave her husband's assassin, she said, because that's what Charlie would have done. Charlie never provoked violence. He was a true leader. So following Charlie's example, I want to end with this. I forgive you, Nancy, for your vile comment about the assassination of Charlie Kirk.
Our next speaker is Mr. Rashid.
Good evening. Thank you all for giving me a few minutes to speak. My name is Kostin Rashid, I'm the author of the article that President Zettler shared. And I want to read just a few excerpts from that and then share a few more comments on why I firmly believe that we should continue to work under the leadership of President Zettler. I started this article by saying, "I'm hesitating to publish this because emotions are high and social media is volatile." I prefaced my entire comment with this framing because I knew people were in a very difficult situation. And I said, "But I'm doing so anyway." Why? Because I believe in erring on the side of empathy, because empathy is only human. The great thinker Hannah Arendt is reportedly to have said, "The death of human empathy is one of the earliest and most telling signs of a culture about to fall into barbarism." Now, as a human rights lawyer, as a practicing Muslim, I can tell you the number of death threats and hate comments I've received from people quoting Charlie Kirk is more than I can count. The number that I continue to get from Charlie Kirk supporters is more than I can count. I've had to sit in federal court and testify against a man who wanted to kill me and my children because they believed the things that Charlie Kirk and people like him taught. So if anyone should have said, "I'm not going to have empathy for this man," it should have been me. But what I responded instead was, despite his hatred for me and for my faith, I return to what my faith teaches me. It teaches me that let not a people's enmity incite you to act other than with justice, be always just. And that's why I closed, that at the end of the day, this is a moment to double down on our empathy, to expand our spheres of compassion, to deepen our service to humanity, to increase our engagement with those willing to engage, to refuse to give up hope for this country and for this world. That means for people who are Muslim, Christian, Jewish believer, non-believer, gay, straight, black, white, brown, you name it, our humanity must lead. And I see somebody in President Zettler, who, by the way, I have never actually met before, and I see the work that she has done for this community for a long, long time, and I ask you as leaders to stand behind that work, to stand behind that leadership, to stand behind that example. Why have empathy even when people make mistakes? It's not for them, it's because we are human, and we recognize that we are better and stronger when we lead with that empathy and compassion. So I ask you to look at her record of empathy and compassion, look at why she shared that post, and lean into that to truly make this the more-
Our next speaker is Darlene Warner.
Test, okay. Thank you for the opportunity to express my opinion. My name is Dr. Darlene Warner. I graduated from what was Irving Crown High School in 1973. I'm a parent of three who graduated from Jacobs High School. I was a teacher of children with special needs at the DeLacy Center and an assistant principal at Gulfview, and I claim the title of longest-serving principal at 18 consecutive years at any school in the history of D-300 since its inception in 1948, and I proudly and successfully served the students at Newbert Elementary School. I have been a taxpayer within the boundaries of D-300 for almost 40 years. I also worked with Nancy on the referendum, and for you to say it was only her doing is a misnomer. It was a group effort. She did a good job, so did a lot more people. To say I have been invested in, and proud of my participation in District 300 for 65 of the 70 years of my life has been a point of pride, up until now. Her words callously declared murder was karma, they were offensive, they are a betrayal of the decency, empathy, and leadership that our children deserve from elected officials. She did not demonstrate self-control. Her statement was hateful, uncalled-for, profoundly childless. It was not karma, it was cold-blooded, we know that. To frame it as some twisted form of cosmic justice reveals a level of pettiness and malice unbecoming of anyone, let alone the president of a school board entrusted with shaping the moral compass of thousands of students. I need my water, I'm so dry, can somebody bring it to me, please? This isn't edgy commentary or just an opinion on her personal page, because she is a public figure, thank you, Michelle. It's a public endorsement of violence that poisons the discourse in our community and sets a dangerous example for the very young people she claims to serve. It doesn't matter that it was on her personal page, but I have to go faster because I'm not going to have time. And she refused to apologize, digging in her heels as if doubling down on bigotry will somehow vindicate her. This isn't leadership. It erodes trust in our schools and distracts from the real issues that you have not been able to get to. Her actions don't reflect just on her, they shape how our children, including her own view, compassion, accountability, and civic discourse. She has failed not only D-300, but every student in our community. She's not just expected to execute the job of her office. In Illinois, school board members are public officials, subject to ethical codes and laws that govern both their official duties and, to some extent, their personal conduct when it reflects on their position. These standards ensure public trust, transparency, and accountability, particularly in how personal actions might influence perceptions of their role in D-300. These are valid reasons for her to be removed. The Illinois Association of School Boards Code of Conduct explicitly addresses person-
The next speaker is Erin Kelly.
Good evening, my name is Erin Kelly, I am a parent in District 300. I'm here this evening as I was asked by Dr. Scarpino to read his statement on his behalf as he could not attend. Good evening, Dr. Smith and board members. My name is Dr. David Scarpino, and I have been a member of this community for over 20 years. I am the past school board president, former associate superintendent of schools, and the past principal of Hampshire Elementary School. I am also a former superintendent and administrative mentor. During the September 23rd board meeting, the board attorney addressed the topic of censure and listed several justifications for it. One included, quote, "A board member's conduct caused a significant disruption to the function of operations of the school district to include board operations. The work of the administration, work at each building, does it impact the community? Has it impacted your students?" Following the attorney's address, the board member in question read a prepared speech, which included, quote, "I'm sorry that the district has been distracted by recent attacks on me, the board, and the administration. I'm sorry that resources meant for running the district and to give our kids the best education possible has been spent the past two weeks on dealing with this manufactured disruption," end quote. This was not a manufactured disruption. Here are the facts about the significant disruption and the lack of good judgment caused by this board member's conduct. More than 250 emails from community members, at least two public protests, over 80 phone calls, two front-page articles in the Daily Herald, and eight Freedom of Information Act requests. These facts provide clear evidence of a significant disruption to the operations of the school district. Furthermore, the board attorney said, quote, "My advice to the board would be to communicate in a manner that puts the District 300 students and community at the center of your decision-making, not an individual board member," end quote. There's been major disruption and lack of good judgment caused by this individual, and to keep them in their current position is unconscionable. The extent of the disruption and the lack of good judgment demonstrated by hundreds of emails from concerned community members, public protests, numerous phone calls, front-page news articles, and multiple Freedom of Information Act requests underscores the gravity of the situation. The impact on school district operations is clear and significant, making it untenable for this individual to remain in their leadership role. I urge the board to review the September 23rd meeting recording, starting at 16 minutes, where you will hear clear evidence of substantial disruption, excuse me, and lack of good judgment.
Hi, my name is Aiden. I'm 11 years old, and I used to be a student at Gilbert's Elementary School in District 300. Right now, I attend a private Catholic school because I didn't feel safe or supported in my old school. I'm here today because of something I heard from a board member, a comment made about Charlie Kirk after his tragic assassination. That comment really hurt a lot of kids like me. I saw the clip of him being shot, and it was incredibly upsetting. What you said felt like you were mocking something very serious, something that traumatized thousands of students across the country. It was heartbreaking. I don't understand how someone whose job is to keep us safe could respond in that way. That's not what leaders are supposed to do. I hope you take some time to think about your words and actions affect kids like me. I want to thank my mom and all the parents and board members who are trying to do the right thing. They give me hope, and I hope one day you could work on being more understanding and kind, too.
Our next speaker is Dan Donahue.
Hi, Dan Donahue, Batavia. First, I came for the socialists, and I did not speak out because I was not a socialist. First, they came for the socialists, and I did not speak out because I was not a socialist. Then they came for the trade unionists, and I did not speak out because I was not a trade unionist. Then they came for the Jews, and I did not speak out because I was not a Jew. Then they came for me, and there was no one left to speak for me. Tonight, they're coming for the school board president. They have already come for books, facts, history, teachers, principals, and students. Our educational institutions and structures are being dismantled for Project 2025. Universities are being intimidated and shaken down. They are bending the knee in disgrace. Our constitutional rights are being trampled. The parallels to Nazi Germany are horrifying. We all have to ask, what side of history will we be on? What will our children say when their kids ask, why didn't we do anything? How do we look at, look to our parents and grandparents who fought Hitler and fascism? The greatest generation were Antifa. General Eisenhower, General Patton, were Antifa. We must all stand up to the bullies that spread hate, fear, and division. We cannot give in to fear. Support the Constitution. Support freedom of speech. Support your fellow Americans. Support empathy and hope. Support education. Support families, students, and love. Take a stand. If freedom of speech is taken away, then dumb and silent, we may be led, like sheep, to the slaughter. George Washington. Without fear of thought, there can be no such thing as wisdom, and no such thing as public liberty and without freedom of speech. As public liberty without freedom of speech, Benjamin Franklin. 180,300, that's the number of teaching positions that will be lost under Project 2025. Elimination of Title I affecting 200, or 2.8 million students. 800,000, that's the number of preschoolers, toddlers, and infants who will lose early learning services under Project 2025's elimination of Head Start. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Alina Murphy.
Hello, I am Alina Murphy. I'm a parent in District 300. Nancy, you are right about one thing. You do have freedom of speech, and so do I. But you do not have freedom from consequences, backlash, or in this case, damage control that is now disrupting your entire school board. And before you blame that disruption on concerned parents, let me remind you, your words were not manufactured. You were being solely judged on your own words. And can we please stop pretending that you wanted to post, you wanted your post to truly be about extending empathy and reconsidering your first reaction? You wanted to say that first part. You wanted to say that. You wanted to look cool, score points with your like-minded friends, show what side of the aisle you're on, whatever. Because if it was truly about that, about empathy, you would have just reposted his message, and that was it, and say nothing else. So give up the act that this was meant to be a good message, especially for students. If you would just admit that part, this would not have gotten this out of hand. And at the last meeting, you had every chance to take responsibility and own your mistake. You had the chance to possibly regain an ounce of respect and trust back from parents. But instead, you double down and you play the victim. Let me get this straight. Okay. So Charlie Kirk gets assassinated in front of the world. You take to social media to voice your vile opinion, and now that you're facing backlash for that vile opinion, you're the victim in all of this. Does that make sense to anybody? Okay. And what's worse, on top of that, you dismiss parents who raise concerns by calling them astroturf groups? These are not fake people. I am a real parent that is very concerned about my child's safety. Okay? To mock us, belittle us, and so clearly gaslight parents who are actually parenting is unacceptable, especially in your position. And to those who are backing Nancy, by the way, you can still support her by admitting that she messed up. Support her by telling her the truth. Hey Nancy, people are offended by that first part of your message. Maybe it would be a good idea for you to apologize for that part, so this doesn't get any bigger. Okay? Encourage accountability. Encourage humility. And most importantly, keep your insensitive comments off of Facebook. Private page or not, you are a school board president commenting on a public execution that happened on a college campus, aka a school. People are watching what you say. And just to be clear, this is not about taking you down, Nancy. This is not about Democrats versus Republicans. This is about holding leaders of our school board district accountable.
The next speaker is Cindy Ignoffo. Cindy here.
Cindy. Can the speaker's name louder, please? Oh, I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm Cindy Ignoffo. I'm a Christian and a concerned grandmother with children in the D, in the District 300. I'm a voter and a resident in the district, and also a precinct committee person, a PC in Precinct 4 of Dundee. And as you know, I'm the link between the voters and the candidates that want to be elected. I provide information about the candidates and make recommendations to the voters as a trusted voice while I bring petitions to be signed for candidacy. I do my best to address the issues and concerns of the voters in my precinct, and I believe this issue with Nancy speaking about karma in the aftermath of a campus school shooting will prove to be foreshadowing when it comes to her own reelection, or possibly sooner. With half of the country in shock at such a tragedy of someone they love being struck down in such a violent manner, Nancy Zettler decided to trample on their hearts with her insensitive statement that karma is a bitch, insinuating that what goes around comes around and that he somehow deserved it. Yes, I read the rest of the post, and it was not much of a comfort because when you start with a statement like karma is a bitch, I already know who you are. But it's not just what Nancy said in that post that has upset everybody. Hey, we all say dumb things sometimes, and it was Nancy's response to defend her words instead of issuing apology. Usually, when we come to our senses and realize that people were hurt by something we said, and it's brought, you know, so much attention by multiple people, you know, multiple voices, everybody being here, you know, you kind of say to yourself, boy, I messed up bad, and I better make this right. Not Nancy. Nope. She stated, I will not apologize, blah, blah, blah. This just reinforces the fact that this person has bad moral character and bad judgment and does not have a finger on the pulse of the district that she oversees. And I'm not going to say the rest, but thank you.
The next speaker is Leslie Russo.
My name is Leslie Russo. I'm a parent in Elgonquin, or a community member. My kids are grown and gone. And I wish someone had had me speak when I was 11 years old, and I would not be so nervous now, maybe. I first met Nancy Zettler when I was in, 2005, when my oldest child was in kindergarten, and she was co-chairing Advanced 300, the grassroots community organization that was supporting two essential referendums aimed at addressing overcrowding, rapid residential growth, and aging school infrastructure in our district. Nancy committed countless hours over many, many months working to secure the $185 million referendum that ultimately funded the construction of Hampshire High School, Gilbert Elementary, and Gary D. Wright Elementary, as well as expansions and renovations at countless other schools. The second referendum that passed funded additional staff to meet the district's growing needs. These were transformative milestones for our community, and yes, the entire community was involved in this. But it was led by Nancy. It was played, she played a central role in making this happen. I often wonder if the families attending those schools today fully realize the work and leadership that was behind them. It was a community-driven effort, but it was led by Nancy. In 2010, when the district needed community support in opposing the extension of the Sears Economic Development Area, a move that meant continuing diversion of much-needed tax revenue, the district leaders again turned to Nancy. She organized rallies, knocked on doors, educated residents, met with legislators, and traveled to Springfield several times, all on her own time and at her own expense. Her efforts contributed significantly to the district's ability to obtain millions of dollars in additional tax revenue. Nancy has a decades-long track record of putting students in public education first, and her commitment is personal. Her mother was a teacher, her daughter is a teacher, and for as long as I've known her, Nancy has given selflessly of her time and talents to this district. She's earned the respect and gratitude of this community, and yet far too often, she's met with personal, very personal attacks instead, which bring us to this current controversy. The outrage over a personal Facebook post is not about the post itself. It's part of a pattern. The same voices that opposed Nancy during COVID have seized this moment to reignite their grievances. This reaction is not about upholding standards. It's about settling scores. Removing her from her position over this would not only be disproportionate, especially when a censure is available, it would risk further dividing the community that deserves unity and focus on our students. Those who took the time to read Nancy's entire post will recognize this quote by Mr. Rashid. Empathy is our inoculation to hatred and fear. It is not weakness, it is strength. It is not-
The next, the next speaker is Paula Merington.
Hello, my name is Paula Merington. My pronouns are she and her, and I'm a parent in a neighboring district. I'm speaking today in support of Nancy, someone I have known for at least the last eight years. Removing Ms. Zettler from her position as board president over personal remarks outside of her official duties on the school board is without any legal precedent, and the First Amendment implications here are very clear. When the board does not follow Illinois law, or at the very clearly defined First Amendment of the Constitution, what arbitrary rules will the D-300 school board follow in the future when someone does not, someone says something within the confines of the law that someone in the community just does not personally like? What comes next? I strongly urge the D-300 school board, the D-300 school district, and the D-300 superintendent to follow the Illinois School Code 105ILCS, sorry, and one of the very fundamental principles on which this great country was founded, that of free speech, and let Nancy continue to serve the community that she loves in the position of D-300 board president. I also ask the board, please examine your own contributions to the chaos in the last week. The witch hunt and fiasco should have been shut down immediately. As soon as it started, you all allowed this to continue. Thank you.
The next speaker is Jodi Kanakula.
Hello, my name is Jodi Kanakula. My pronouns are she and her, and I am not a community member here, but I have family who are community members here and send their children to this district. I'm here today to urge the board to protect our Constitution and the right to free speech. Nancy Zettler is a diligent and hard-working board member. She made a comment as a private citizen on her personal Facebook page, not as a board member. And as many of you have said, you agreed with that. You agreed that was okay. And with all due respect, to then say it's not about that, it's about leadership, that really is throwing her under the bus, and it's an excuse for you to capitulate to the political bullying. I need to tell you, while I was sitting waiting for the meeting, I heard somebody say, they need to know they are being watched. You need to consider that when you consider what you're doing here today. Do you want to be watched? Do you want everything you say to be judged? Because if you let this go, they're going to come after you, too. Please protect the Constitution. Please do the right thing.
The next speaker is Holly Jarwoski.
Good evening, board. My name is Holly Hasten Jarwoski. I am a parent and a taxpayer here. I am also the so-called manufacturer of this crisis, but we all know that's not true. I didn't go digging for your words. The screenshots of your post were sent to me by another parent, one that was too afraid of the backlash that you and your supporters would have to share it publicly themselves. That fear is real and quite understandable. We saw how critics like Mr. Fiorino were targeted by Jessica Jacobs and others who spoke here tonight. It's likely that that's possibly why he's not here. I am sad that you missed coffee with me. It would have been an interesting discussion. I'm not a group. I'm not a cabal. I'm a parent, and I'm a mom. I'm a mom who was mortified by the moral depravity of your response to a murder of a young man in the prime of his life, murdered for daring to have conversations with people. And yes, I did read your full statement, sir. But tonight is not about empathy, it's about accountability. Ms. Zettler, in your non-apology speech, you claimed freedom of expression and intellectual property, and yes, you have all of those rights. But you should also remember your constitutional law class. The First Amendment restricts the government from prosecution of speech, not citizens. You may speak freely, absolutely, but we, the people you claim to represent, have every right to hold you accountable for your words. And your words do matter. You've called parents many things, particularly online. You've called your parents and constituents fringe groups, astroturf groups, asshats, morons, and even Klansmen. And that's what you've said publicly. I can only imagine what's been said privately. That is not leadership. That is contempt for the very people you are supposed to represent. You mocked so-called groups that tried to vote out elected officials. Good! That's how a free society works in America. We don't silence people with violence. We persuade, we organize, we decide at the ballot box. Charlie Kirk was silenced with a coward's bullet. Parents are here, standing face to face, three minutes at a time, to express grievances like civilized adults. That's not a mob. That's democracy. And that deserves respect, not ridicule. So let's be clear. If you agree with Ms. Zettler for all, by all means, please continue to vote for her. If you don't, then show up at the ballot box. Run for office. Get involved. Because outrage alone does nothing unless it changes the next election.
Our next speaker is Denise Theobald.
Hello, my name is Denise Theobald. I don't live here in District 300, but I was really quite perplexed at the outrage from President Zettler's comments on Facebook, because I thought it was really thoughtful for her to share that post that really showed insight to say, "Hey, I feel like maybe I have these emotions," but was able to share a post that showed empathy and where we should all be as human beings, to show each other that humanity in a horrible time. I don't align with Mr. Kirk's beliefs, I believe they were dangerous in many ways, but of course, I felt horrible at the situation, and that's what was conveyed there. So is this really about leadership, though? I do want to say, what I've also seen is there was a rally call for hate, maybe from some of the parents in this district, but from so many far-right radical extreme groups. We have Awake Illinois, a group that spews hate towards the LGBTQ and trans community, one that's been designated as a hate group. We have the Three-Headed Eagle Alliance, a far-right group, who actually invited Stuart Rhodes to this community and screamed about freedom of speech. That's great, if you want a convicted felon, an insurrectionist, but they were able to do it. They were able to invite him and do it. So I find it a little hypocritical. There's also multiple GOP groups, such as Kane County Speaks, and literally the Republican Parties who were calling for people to come here, and the hate in those Facebook groups were just astounding. President Zettler's record on representing and protecting all kids, and I mean all kids, has been commended over and over again. Not like the political groups that have called people like me vermin, supporters of death and cult, and these groups that feel the LGBTQ community, especially the trans community, should not exist. She's a fierce supporter of these communities. So it really wasn't about her post, was it? It was convenient, see, look, look, let's jump on it. Imagine, I want the board to imagine, being attacked, knowing that the backbone of these attacks are from so many of this. This is a movement. It's dangerous, it's not just concerned parents, I'm sure President Zettler will talk to those concerned parents. But they have been rallycalled here, and it's always-[785.44][785.44](noise)
The next speaker is Michelle Hipppler.
Good evening, I'm Michelle Hipppler. I'm a community member today. My son has since graduated, 2008. As I sit here and wrote this, this afternoon actually, I thought about the reasons involved in what's going on today. I was at the last board meeting and I did speak, but there's more than even our education of our children that I hope the Board of Education even takes into consideration. I lived in this community for 34 years. If we don't get our education under control in this community with D-300, our house values are going to look like crap down the road. And I would hate to see that. I still live here, I'm not prepared to sell my house yet, but that is taken into consideration. I'm feeling compelled to point out, though, that Nancy was given the opportunity to apologize where she felt there was no need to apologize, yet she mentioned she feared for her life and her family. I would think she should and would, if she was that concerned about it and no remorse of apologizing, she has no regard for human life, not much different than those that unfortunately sit in jail for taking someone else's life. This speaks volume as to her character and her ethics in that we strive to teach every day to our teachers, or help our teachers do it, to our children, and even to each other. She also tried to share that her Facebook page was hijacked. Once again, these are the consequences one takes using social media, may it be personal or not. What a ridiculous comment, so that the reality is that she needs, unfortunately, to apologize and step down. I pray that the Board of Education D-300 understands that the positions she has put out to our children in our community today are now taking away what you guys do as real work and need to be working on, and not be here sitting at another special meeting regarding Nancy Zettler. I hope that you guys really, really take it into consideration that a special meeting had to be taken to understand what your community is saying to you tonight, which, by the way, a special meeting was initially asked for and it was not granted. It ended up being a District 300 board meeting that you spoke, that we all had the opportunity to speak at last week. This woman crosses the line with her values and ethics and has no business being in our school system of any capacity. She totally disregards you as the board, as your president. I pray that, as a Christian, that she understands and hears the words that most people are saying is, had she just simply apologized, we would not be spending tax dollar monies and be here tonight.
The next speaker is Michelle Filio.
Hi, I'm Michelle Filio. I am a new parent to the district. I have two daughters in this district, and I am actually concerned if she is removed or whatever the plan is here. I'm concerned because I feel like she is working hard for children like my children in this school district, that she's been working hard for many years to help support all of the children in this school district. Our nation was definitely founded on certain principles, and one of those is the First Amendment. Yes, she had every right to share on her private social media her feelings. Many of us are frustrated and upset with the things that are going on, but at this point, I've only heard word of the one person being shot, when so many of our children in this country have also been taken down by gun violence. And none of the people here so concerned about this one person have said a single thing about all of the children and the fact that our children had to do, what's it called? The drill, the active shooter drill, just recently, last week. It's disheartening that they don't have any concern about that, and they're actual children, but this one single man, who, yes, should not have, this should not have happened to him, but he supported gun rights. He supported people that had guns like that. It's an amendment, right? We should have gun rights, but he supported violence, he supported hate. Everything in his life was hate. I actually want to say that, I'm sorry. Many community members support you. You were voted in, you are a very well-respected member of this community. Please do not succumb to bullies. This country has been filled with them, and it's hate and it's toxic. Please, please uphold the parents who are so grateful for her and for all of you who support our children, who work tirelessly for them. Please support her and don't throw her under the bus.
The next speaker is R.T. Maldener.
Good evening, I'm R.T. Maldener. Community member here of D-300, Data Six, pastor in the local community of Carpenter'sville, started in Pinger Grove. And I just want to say thank you to everybody here, thanks to our law enforcement for always keeping us safe, and thanks for the opportunity.[1207.01][1207.01](applause) Thanks for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I wrote and contributed to an article that you can choose to read or not on where I stand on what my ask is of you, but that's not why I'm here. We all took the pledge of allegiance, and it really struck me that we all, in good faith, said, "One nation, under God." And I'm struck by that statement because that is the statement, if we're honest, we have drifted the farthest from. We've tried to build schools and communities, even this nation, as if God was an option, and the result is everything that you see and feel in this room. Division, confusion, chaos, anger, malice, all of it. Name-calling, vitriol, on repeat. Let's be clear, and let me say it plainly, there is no unity, there is no freedom, there is no empathy, there is no justice, there is no peace, and there is no future apart from the Lord Jesus Christ being the centerpiece of this place.[1304.48][1304.48](applause) I have one minute, and I just want to say this. The Bible says, "Blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord," and that there is no salvation in anybody else than in Jesus Christ. There is no other name under heaven given among men by which we must be saved. If we continue to ignore Him, or greater yet, we continue to exchange Him for a God in our own image, or our opinions, or some other twisted demonic ideology, we will continue to raise kids that are worldly, street-smart, but lost, connected but hopeless, and successful in the world's eyes, and have a plethora of money in their bank account but spiritually bankrupt before the God of this universe. And we cannot afford that. Our schools should not just produce achievers, they should raise up leaders with character who trust and depend upon the Lord Jesus Christ alone, because there is no other God. I rest my case, God bless you.[1369.12][1369.12](applause)
Okay, I'm going to jump in and again ask the group, please refrain from commenting, from cheering, from adding to a public statement. We appreciate your applause afterwards if you agree with it, and we have allowed that to continue, but it's very difficult for the board to hear the speaker when you interject yourselves into what he or she is saying. So please refrain from doing that moving forward. We have a ask from the board member to take a five-minute recess, to use the facilities. So we're going to ask for a motion for a five-minute recess, we apologize for the delay.
Don't move.
Second. We'll be back in five minutes.
Did you hit the gavel? We're going to reconvene the meeting, if everybody would like to take a seat. Can everybody please take a seat? We're going to reconvene the meeting. We're going to reconvene the meeting. Can I have a motion to reconvene the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, will you take the roll, please?
Marka, aye. Melia? Zettler?
Aye.
Lindmark?
Aye.
Burkett?
Aye.
McKenday?
Aye.
Six board members present.
Thank you. We have seventeen speakers left, and the next speaker is Rebecca Morgan.
Good evening, District 300 Board of Education members. My name is Rebecca Morgan, and I'll begin by stating this clearly: I am not a member of some imaginary astroturf angry mob. I'm not an insufferable moron, but I am an independent, free-thinking, concerned parent, and I'm actively involved in my community. I'm someone who cares deeply about the well-being of our students, the integrity of our schools, and the values that should guide this board. I'm here tonight to affirm the principles that every board member pledges to uphold, principles clearly outlined in the Illinois School Board Governance Code of Conduct, and that code states, "A board member must act with integrity and accept responsibility for personal decisions and actions." Recently, our school board president, Ms. Zettler, her conduct had called this standard into question. We are here because she made a post that was not only deeply inappropriate, but at worst it could be interpreted as an endorsement of violence. When given the opportunity to demonstrate accountability, she reposted someone else's thoughts and words to excuse her own. Yes, I read the post. She deflected blame, and then she claimed victimhood. That is not leadership, and that is not acceptable. The Code of Conduct also reminds us that school board members must respect the dignity and worth of all people, and model civility and integrity in all interactions. These are not just aspirational words; they are binding expectations of this board. Ms. Zettler has attempted to frame her post as a personal post, but this defense fails under ethical and legal scrutiny. There is the 2012 case of the United States versus Miragildo, where they ruled if privacy settings are ineffectual, the user has no justifiable expectations that his friends will keep the profile private. This is also supported by Davidson v. Randall in 2016. Let me also be clear: There can be no unity without accountability. The community cannot move forward if its leaders refuse to acknowledge the harm that their words may cause. Healing begins with responsibility, not denial. The conduct further states that board members must place the education and welfare of all students above personal and political agendas. That includes protecting every student in the family in this district, regardless of beliefs, backgrounds, or their political views.
The next speaker is Jim Malone.
Good evening. My name is Jim Malone. I'm a District 300 taxpayer. I've been for twenty-six years. I have no children in the district, which means I put in a hundred percent and take zero services out. Just thought I would let that. I have no problem with that, by the way, because we need an educated community. I also serve on the Board of Trustees for the Village of Carpentersville. I'm here to stand in support for board member and President Nancy Zettler. I'm also here to stand in support of the First Amendment. That's what we should be teaching our children, not this. This is a waste of my taxpayer money, and I'm not blaming any board member. We all know why we're here and why we're wasting our money. This is a terrible example for our students. Just because you don't like what someone said, you can fire them? That's not the First Amendment. That's what we should be teaching our children, not how to be bullies. If you don't like what someone says, you gather up a bunch of people and yell at them and get them fired. I ask the board to do the right thing: Stand up for the First Amendment. Thank you.
The next speaker is Gigi Land.
Good evening. My name is Gigi Land, and I'm a parent of two children in D-300, and I'm also the PTO president at our elementary school, although my words are not reflective of that board. At the last meeting, Nancy Zettler had the chance to demonstrate leadership: empathy, grace, even the smallest acknowledgement of her part in the harm that her public commentary was causing. Let's be honest, this is not the first, second, third time that she has ignited division. Even if she's believed that she was right, and she has every right to her opinion, she could have recognized that her posts contributed to disruptive division and distrust, and taken steps to de-escalate. She could have chosen humility. Instead, she doubled down. She intensified her rhetoric with no sign of reflection or responsibility. That is not leadership, that is escalation. And when a board member magnifies conflict, instead of calming it, it shows the community exactly who she is. There's also a glaring double standard that I need to address. I know for a fact, and you could ask me later how I know, that students in D-300 have faced consequences for what they post online, and I'm not talking about my students. Students are taught that abusive language, slurs, and derogatory remarks are misconduct. The D-300 Handbook explicitly prohibits verbal abuse and name-calling. Students are expected to respect self, respect others, respect environment. There was no respect from Ms. Zettler last week, or in many of her posts. If our students are disciplined for derogatory comments, how can we possibly tolerate the same behavior from board members, leaders who are supposed to model integrity? And as I said last time, I am not an antagonist for either side, and I can truly understand how the board feels bombarded when there are some complaints from parents that have become, quite frankly, absurd. I've seen outrage online about high school seniors learning words like salacious or lascivious. These are not vulgarities, they're academic terms, part of a rich vocabulary. When we cry outrage over every little thing, it distracts from the real issues and makes it harder to take legitimate concerns like this seriously. I am calling on everyone in this room and in this community to take a step back and reset. Both sides here are too far entrenched to compromise. We see it in Congress, opposing sides refuse to work together, and nothing gets done. I cannot change that, nor do I condemn those who blame national leaders for setting the tone, but I do believe that change begins locally, and that is why I'm here, focused on what I can influence in hopes that responsible, accountable leadership at the community level will ripple outward. This is a moment for common sense, for dignity, for leadership that models the values that we claim to expect from our children. Tonight is the board's chance to show that respect and accountability matters. Anything less only deepens the distrust already dividing us. And to everyone in this room, we all have a part in this. We need to reset, refocus, and remember what matters.
The next speaker is Erin Neesey.
Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Smith. I'm here again because silence is not an option. I didn't come here last week because I'm on a political party, or I have some kind of passion towards anything. I came here because I love children. I've dedicated twenty years of my life to education. I spent ten of them here, in this school district. The only thing that I care about is the safety of students. When I read Ms. Zettler's reposted, whatever post it was, it said that what happened at a school shooting was karma. That is why I'm here. I'm not here because I care about political views. I don't care. All I care about is that every single day, the thousands of students, my three daughters included, in this district, my friends, my colleagues, are safe. When I got up here to speak on behalf, I'm not a part of a group or astroturf, I don't even know what that means, truthfully, and I'm a reading specialist. You can laugh now. You couldn't laugh at me last week, but now you can, because that was funny. I was met with your bullying. You rolled, I rolled, you did. My friend over here admitted there was an eye-rolling. You rolled your eyes, I had to stop my speech. You're rolling your eyes right now! You are rolling your eyes right now! It's someone who cares about children. I voted for you, Nancy. I voted for many of you up there. I can tell you it's not going to happen again. I am disgusted that we can liken a school shooting to karma, and then say, "Oh, but I have this beautiful poem from Mr. Rashid, and it's okay now." If I said something as an educator on my personal page that went against anyone's beliefs, I would lose my job. This gentleman I was just speaking with, that has your back and is for free speech, agreed with me. I have freedom of speech, but I am held accountable. You had the right thing to do last week. You could have easily said that you apologized for the way others interpreted it. Not your words. Had you posted just what he wrote, people would have not even turned an eye. I was drawn to it because you likened a school shooting to karma. That is the bottom line. You are responsible for my three children that come to school here, and it was okay for a person to shoot another human being in front of thousands of children. I promise, if you laugh right now, I will, I promise I will make it my vision to never see you on this board again. This is serious. You are responsible for my children, my friends, my colleagues. This is not a political thing. And then instead of that, you choose to roll your eyes at me, to laugh while I spoke. This is a leadership thing. You are not fit to be a leader. We spent $2 million on a program called Leader and Me. $2 million.
The next speaker is Sarah Patty.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Patty. Thank you for the opportunity to allow me to be heard tonight. I'm a mother of a child in D-300, and this is my first time actually speaking at a board meeting. Life and love are the most precious gifts that we've been granted. Nancy Zettler provided a clear glimpse into her primary thought process, justifying death and hate. She expressed her ideology as being more important than human life. Nancy's first thought after an inconceivable assassination of a man in front of thousands of students wasn't about the terrible loss of human life. Her first thought wasn't even the concern for all the students who were subjected to watching this despicable act of murder. Her first thought was to justify the assassination through her own ideology. The issue is extremely straightforward. It's not time to hide behind procedures and technicalities. Action is necessary. Failure to suitably address this issue will only shine more light on Nancy's devious ideology. Authority figures within the district who stand idle regarding this massive issue will still need to wake up and look at themselves in the mirror every day. We call upon all individuals holding significant positions within the D-300 hierarchy to properly address this situation in order to preserve the integrity of our community's education system. In the essence of cherishing life and love, Nancy Zettler most certainly should not reside with any position which impacts or influences our community's children.
The next speaker is Teresa Naff.
Hello, my name is Teresa Naff, or Teri Naff, and I thank you all for your hard work, and I know this is extremely difficult. I was here last board meeting, and I was so upset by the behavior that I couldn't even hardly speak. It was very difficult. I've been an educator, I'm a community member. I've been an educator for forty years. I taught middle school for thirty-four years, and I loved it. On the first day of school, I told my students, "We're not going to worry about a lot of rules, we're going to focus on one thing: Respect," and I wrote it on the board. And I told them that I would respect them, I expected them to respect me and each other, and there would be consequences, we would talk about it and examine it if they didn't. And if I witnessed it, I would take students aside and we would talk about it. And I'm not seeing respect from a lot of groups here, and that just makes me very sad. I work in the community with nonprofit groups. I'm not here representing them, just, I'm speaking for myself. But working in nonprofit groups, I see a lot of people who work together cooperatively with respect for each other, and they care about kids and teachers and community, and it's just a wonderful feeling. And so this, to me, all this negativity and the hate and the anger is so upsetting, very upsetting. We all get angry. I mean, I've said a lot of things in anger that I regret, and we're human, but you have to, you have to get beyond it and make amends and try to do better the next time. And how you deal with anger speaks volumes about your character. I was not happy with President Zettler's statement after the last meeting. I thought that she could have done better. I still think that she has her freedom of speech. I was a little disappointed at her statement because I don't think that it helped the situation. But I was really upset, and this doesn't seem to get wrought up a lot, with Board Member Steve Fiorentino's post. I think he stirred the fire, he fueled the fire, and I think it was, I think that was, I think that was intent. That's just my opinion, but that's what I think. It was not the proper venue. If I have a problem with a neighbor or a colleague, I go and talk to them first. I don't put it on social media. That's just not right. This is a difficult situation. I don't envy you all this. I know you don't take it lightly, I know you're very concerned about it. I know we all have to work forward, work, move forward in keeping respect at the center of our dialogue, and I just think it's so important that it doesn't have to do with politics or religion or any of that. It's about respect and caring for each other. I care about kids, I care about this community, and I thank you for letting me speak tonight. Thank you.
The next speaker is Danielle Wolk.
Hello, everyone. My name is Danielle Wolk, and I'm a resident here. I also want to say that I am also a family nurse practitioner. I've been practicing for about a decade. I have literally dedicated my life to helping others. We all know that the First Amendment protects people's right to free speech, but in today's world, we need to remember why free speech is so important. Freedom of speech is considered one of the most important rights in a democracy because it protects the ability of people to share ideas and pursue truth. It's often called the cornerstone of liberty, because without freedom of speech, it's hard to protect or even talk about other rights. There are limits to freedom of speech, which includes incitement to violence, like an insurrection; true threats, like to the homeless; obscenity, which is the legal definition of obscene based on the Miller Test, and must take the entire communication into consideration, not isolated passages; CP, commercial speech regulations, time, place, and manner restrictions, and national security. Nancy Zettler's remarks on her personal social media page is protected under the First Amendment. Censorship of speech simply because it offended some people is not consistent with the First Amendment. In fact, the person she refers to in her post would agree. If I were up here right now, and I were to cry, and I told you I was a Trump supporter, how many people would think, "Oh, what a snowflake"? And then if I told you, "You know what, I'm a leftist," and I cried, how many of you would you think, "What a snowflake"? My best friend is on the complete opposite of me when it comes to our political views, but somehow we make it work. Somehow we find a middle ground. Somehow we find a middle ground. And I think it's from what a few people have said, and that's about respect and just understanding that we are all human. Nancy, you are human, and you deserve a little grace. So in summary, I support Nancy Zettler as our District 300 Board of Education's president. Thank you all.
The next speaker is Matt Kotapka.
My name is Matt Kotapka, a community member and a parent. I stand here again to demand the removal of Board President Ms. Zettler as president. Her disturbing attitude and actions show she cannot lead fairly and have broken the trust we place in our leaders. As discussed at the last meeting, Ms. Zettler called parents and community members, including me, astroturf groups, claiming our concerns were manufactured. I'm not part of any fake group, nor are the many parents I've met here. Her dismissive words insult their genuine worries and show a lack of respect for the people she serves. She also claimed earlier her post was private, but as an attorney, she should note the case law states that Facebook posts, even to friends only, are not private speech. This excuse dodges accountability and deepens the divide in our community. The IASB Code of Conduct requires board members to represent all school district constituents honestly and equally without favoring any political side. By dismissing our concerns, refusing to apologize, and hiding behind a false claim of privacy, Ms. Zettler shows bias and inability to serve all families fairly. This breaks her promise to act with integrity and sets a poor example for our students who need leaders they can trust to be fair and honest. Ms. Zettler, I obviously don't wish any harm on you, but your divisive attitude is part of what's wrong with our country. That's why the bullets are flying. You don't seem to see people with different views as equals, but members of one of the fringe groups. I hope you reflect and change your ways. Carrying this much negativity every day must be heavy. As a Christian, I'll pray for you, but our students deserve better. I demand your removal as president and will continue fighting for change. I urge this board to vote to remove Ms. Zettler as president to show our kids that leadership means fairness and responsibility, not excuses and division. Thank you.
The next speaker is Christine Topert.
I come to you as a parent who raised two boys in this school district. And I graduated from '91 from Dundee Crown, and my husband graduated in '83 from Jacobs. I am the epitome of, you know, living here my whole life, never leaving the area. I have personal experience with this. Let me explain. My son was in high school. He made a post outside of school, outside, and not on Facebook. It bled to Facebook, but not on Facebook. That post was taken by another person, comments were added that were more inappropriate, which made the post worse, I have to tell you as a parent. It was, it was an inappropriate post. And to protect my son's privacy, I'm not going to tell you, but I know that there are people here, including Kathleen, we met over that. That post was taken, comments were added, which made it more inappropriate. My son was suspended for 10 days. It's called the Lexus Nexus, what happens outside that carries into the building and disrupts the learning environment. This has disrupted it. There is a lot of kids, Nancy. It's not okay that you feel that because he used his voice, whether he was speaking his truth, whatever truth that might be, that he lost his life. That's not karma, that's evil. That's evil. When somebody can't use words and chooses to take up violence on another person, that's not karma. Nancy, I know that you've done a lot of good things. I've raised my kids here. I am, don't believe in permanent removal, but I believe in a suspension. This is a teachable moment for our children. If our children make posts, we, we say, "If you have nothing nice to say, you keep it to yourself," right? We teach our kids that we have to respect other kids. My child was suspended for 10 days. If my child was suspended for the exact same thing that's going on here, and we don't do something, this is, this is a teachable moment for these children. This shows them that while you have the First Amendment right to speak, this wasn't done in school, while he was a student, it was not done in school. Where was his First Amendment? When I went to school to say, "Hey, I'm his parent. It's my job to raise my children." He comes from a two-parent home, mother and a father, church-going, okay? My parents were married for 39 years, so he, his grandfather was the deputy sheriff of King County.
The next speaker is Wendy Rudd.
Hi, yes, my name is Wendy Rudd, and I am a District 300 parent of two girls that graduated in 2018 and 2020. And I just want to say I support the First Amendment rights. There's just many public figures making comments that not everyone agrees with, especially when the full context isn't shared. And we may not agree with them, and sometimes we turn them into something that they're not also. So I think the biggest thing is how we respond to things. And then is, it's the difference, how we respond to things is the difference. Turning this statement into a scandal and escalating it to this point is a response that's responsible for taking the time away from the education of our kids and what is supposed to be being done by the board. It's not the statement itself that has caused this, it has been the response. I think the board needs to look beyond this scandal and what it has become politically and take a, take a look at it and make a decision based off of the years that Nancy has given, based on her performance. And that's all.
The next speaker is Kelly Giordino.
Like many parents, I am a former D-300 student, a parent of D-300 students, and also a sister whose brother was, in Charlie Kirk's opinion, acceptable collateral damage. When I heard him say that, those words broke my heart, my heart ached. But I never, ever once, in my, even in my own mind, denied him the right to say the things that he was saying. He had the right. He said those things on college campuses. He had the right. As distasteful as Nancy's comments may be to some, there's no violation of the Code of Conduct. It's your interpretation of her statements that have brought us to this point. If the community no longer wants her in office, fine, vote her out. That's why we vote. But don't try to run her out of office because you're personally offended by her comments. Heck, maybe we should take all this energy and redirect this energy to stopping school shootings. Do something worthwhile. Just remember, every compromise we... Every compromise we make to our right of free speech, free speech will in fact come back to haunt us, because as we all know, karma.
The next speaker is Leo Bernardi.
My name is Leo Bernardi, and I'm a member of the district. Resident of the district, I should say. As a member of this board, you took an oath of office that includes, "As part of the school board membership, I shall accept the responsibility for my role in the equity and quality education of every student in the school district." Let's remember the history of District 300 over the last 20 or so years. When schools were crying for equity, how fair was it for some students to walk through snow and rain to get to temporary classrooms outside their schools? How fair was it when some schools were squished into closets as a classroom? Or at class sizes in the 30s for elementary classes? Who stepped up and led the education of the community regarding why a referendum was needed to ensure there was equality for all our students? And let's not forget the support the community had to assure teachers, paraprofessionals, and staff receive fair and supporting wages. We saw which leaders of the District 300 community stood and supported those important assets for our students. Again, the oath you took states quality education for every student, not quality education based on voices who indoctrinate people to believe that a person's soul is more important than another's. A person's soul is regulated to birthing because of their chromosomes. Or a person's soul should not be recognized because of their background, but to provide a quality education for teachers, staff, and paraprofessionals who nurture, mentor, foster social and emotional development, and protect all of our students in their care. We have read and heard many voices lately, and the question that comes to mind is, if we are teaching, supporting the students of District 300 not to be bullied, then why would this board cower to bullies? If we teach our students, who will become the pillar of our community, to stand up and support one another against bullies, then what happens if someone takes an easy way out of a situation, even if it's not the best choice to make? Think about the leadership over the last 20 years that has quieted the voices of different bullies. Are you going to support that leadership? Or support the voices that will divide us, turn us against each other? As a community, where were we 20 years ago when the school needed schools? Where were we when teachers were fighting for better pay? It's easy to let bullies win, but is that the oath you took in providing the equitable and quality education for all students? Thank you.
The next speaker is Amy Gorecki.
Hi, my name is Amy Gorecki. I'm a community member and taxpayer. It is shameful of Nancy that we are all here. She should have resigned after last week's meeting in accordance with the rules, guiding rules of ISB's Code of Conduct. No one wants to be here tonight. No one wants to be giving up their night and have their tax dollars going to waste this waste of time. She has had since September 23rd to make the right decision and resign, or at the bare minimum, step down as president. As every board member has said in their opening speech, everyone has the right to free speech. No one in here is arguing that Nancy does not have First Amendment rights. And if I'm wrong, please stand up. See, we can all agree on something. As a professional, I know I have a responsibility to conduct myself in a certain manner while online, even on my private pages. In fact, I have to do continued education on it yearly in my position, and it's not a public one. Maybe this is something that should be instituted going forward for the board. As every board member said, Nancy, as a leader, needs to know how to cool the temperature and bring the community together, which she has immensely failed to do. Nancy sat up there and rolled her eyes and called her concerned community a small astroturf group. And now her friends in the community are calling us a loud mob and bullies when all we are doing is standing up for what we believe in and asking for accountability of a community leader. Again, showing just how divisive that one post has become and how negatively it is affecting the community. Nancy digging your feet in the ground and refusing to resign is doing much more harm than the good that you have done in the past. To the rest of the board, I do not envy you. You have a very hard choice to make tonight. We all know that Nancy is your friend, but friendship should not overrule your elected positions. The ISB Code of Conduct needs to be your guide tonight, and everyone up there should be fully aware of what that is and make the choice based on those guidelines. Thank you.
The next speaker is Charlie Rahi. Maybe pronouncing that incorrectly.
I've been a member of this community for about a decade and a parent in this community for about a decade. When I first saw a post in the Hampshire Community Group, my knee-jerk reaction was shock. The small section selection repeatedly shared by what I considered trusted prominent voices in my community surprised me. As I looked a little bit deeper, I came across articles and other social media groups where screenshots of only part of the post was shared. The comments painted a dark picture stained with hate. With my gut knotted, I decided to read everything Nancy shared to see what she could have possibly said to deserve turning the community against her. For a moment, I thought there was a miscommunication. A thoughtful plea for empathy in the face of violence couldn't have people up in arms. It shouldn't. Suddenly, the cropped image of Nancy's post made more sense. I looked into the names connected to the articles, the groups, a five-year-old petition for the same reason by the same people, and the new Turning Point chapter at Hampshire High School. That's when the dots began to connect. I think we're on a slippery slope right now. If we follow through with this, where does it end? I think we know. Nothing she could have said in the previous meeting would have satisfied those causing the true disruption. Nancy isn't awaiting judgment because of an inappropriate post. It's because of what side her politics fall on. This is five years in the making from the same group seeking revenge because of circumstances out of the board's control. Oddly enough, they don't seem to have a problem with masks now. If Nancy loses her elected position today, it won't be because her private call for compassion went unheard. It's because we gave merit to threats of a group of community disruptors who have distorted words and contemplations she shared. I've heard a lot about her disruption tonight, but while the loudest among us demand action, Nancy looks after a much larger demographic than those here today. Part of that demographic, too afraid to speak here today likely because of the intimidation tactics, like the cowardly act of taking a photo as I sit here, like that woman and her friend were doing to me. Even though they could have waited for a YouTube video, I'm married but flattered, thank The silent majority likely feels seen by Nancy's kind words to not lose our empathy, something we are in danger of doing here today. Shout out to Gilbert's Elementary, Dr. Z, Mrs. Troy, and especially Mrs. P., who is quite an amazing social worker at Gilbert's Elementary. Thank you.
The next speaker is Sharon Fettin. The next speaker is Sharon Fettig.
Good evening. My name is Sharon Fettig. I've been a resident for 20 years, and my kids have graduated from Jacobs. First off, I think the board members should need to keep their speeches to three minutes. We are parents who do not want a representative who celebrates someone getting assassinated at a school event while having a public debate, period. Nancy is the one to blame for the circus. We all know nothing will happen to her. Hopefully, parents will remember this when voting comes around. We have to remember, I have never forgotten the COVID debacle. COVID showed their true colors if you were paying attention. The person who talked about being bullied, that's exactly what she did to our kids during COVID and continued with her woke policies. This board has lied to us and manufactured emails to make it look like they were being bullied a few years ago. So you have no credibility with us parents who have been paying attention. This was on Steve Fairtown, I don't know how to say his last name, board member page of one of Nancy's friends who spoke here tonight. Hold on, let me find it. "Steve, stop it, or I'll make sure you never win another seat. I have so much dirt on you, it's not even funny. You play both sides. It's disgusting. Grow a backbone and pick a side. Sit this one out." That sounds like bullying to me, flat out. That's really all I got. I just, vote her out. I know you won't. Parents have been paying attention. Hopefully, when the voting starts again, I don't know, you've got three years, I don't want to pay attention that much anymore. I just know that when voting does happen, to vote all you guys out because your woke policy, oh, quality education? You guys are not paying attention to what's going on at school. Your kids are not getting quality education. Scores have dropped, like I told you before. Fritzker lowered it. So it looks like you're doing better? You're not. Wake up. We've been paying attention for the last five years, trying to protect your kids, too. So it's not just one-sided. We're trying to protect all of them. Vote her out. That's it. God bless America. God bless Charlie Kirk, who's not a racist. Thank you.
Everyone, we're so close to the end. There's two more. Can we just, let's keep it together for two more. The next speaker is Irene Wagner.
Good evening, everyone. My pronouns are pissed-off American. I want to start off and take, and thank Mr. Frantino, as I did not have a chance to thank him last time, for having a backbone and sticking up for himself, as none of you have done anything to stick up for the school district. I want to start off and say, Nancy, your character is everything, and you lack character. You lack accountability. You lack respect. You have no morals, no values to stay in the position you're in. I have never met anybody so vile as you. I sat in this room last week, or our last Board of Directors meeting, and watching your face, the facial expressions you made, body language, said it all. You have no respect, and the only thing you had to do, take accountability and apologize. That's all. You didn't do none of it. You made excuses. That's a five-year-old child. You're a grown adult. Take accountability for your actions. You need to step down. Some of you, you other ones have to step down as well, because this is getting ridiculous. I've never been so disgusted with the behavior and the things that came out of you. But Nancy, it's sad. That's all. That's it. God bless America.
Our final speaker of the evening is Kathy Schlosser.
Hello, my name is Dr. Kathy Schlosser. Just about everything I've said has already been said, but I would like to tell you a little bit about myself. I'm a resident of Algonquin. I lived in Lake in the Hills for over 30 years. Four of my children went through District 300 schools. Three of them graduated from Jacobs, and every day I'm thankful for that. Okay? Two of my kids, one is an architect and one is an animator, I owe to the art department in having AP Studio, because many schools don't have that. I am also a Christian, and frankly, I'm a little nervous up here because I don't see a lot of the teachings of Christ being shown here. And it's upsetting to me that people are supportive of an individual who did not follow the teachings of Christ and spread hateful rhetoric. And when Nancy, an elected official, who I also voted for, okay, made her statement, I didn't necessarily see it on social media or anything. I am a nurse, and because those are my values, I feel nursing is a sacred profession, and I try to live by my values. And someone I worked with asked me if I knew what was happening in my own community. And I'm ashamed to say I didn't, despite having been a member of COR many years ago when my kids were in school, so I know what it's like to pass a referendum. Many of the schools that your kids are in right now, I helped pass that referendum. In any case, she told me what Nancy said, and I told her, I go, well, that's how I felt when I heard that. So thank you, Nancy, for saying that, because I too felt it was karma. Karma is the law of cause and effect. It's not a statement of opinion, okay, of anything. And he said, and I quote, "I think it's worth it to have a cost of, unfortunately, some gun deaths every year so that we can have the Second Amendment to protect." He's talking about our children, okay? Our children in this school. And if you think the children aren't watching, they are. And they are scared doing those drills and so on. And this man supported that over them. He supported gun rights over them. It was karma, I'm sorry to say, okay? And I think it's more important to look at her whole career as opposed to Charlie Kirk's. And I'm shocked. Who are my community members? Were you this upset from school shootings? Do you think? But you're supporting him more than you are supporting the schoolchildren.
I'm going to ask for decorum in the room. I'm going to ask for decorum in the room, because we're going to transition back to board discussion, and that cannot happen if there's commentary from the audience. We're going to move back to board discussion. This is really your platform to continue the discussion, so I will turn it over to whoever wants to pick the discussion up, if they have anything else to say. Nancy, would you like to say anything?
All right. Understand, I am in no way questioning or weighing Ms. Setler's value to the board. I am confident that however our vote goes this evening, Ms. Setler will continue to be a dedicated advocate for this district, as well as a hard-working, committed board member. Please also understand that, sorry. Please also understand that no board officer position, including president, has any more authority, weight, or influence than any other board member. All board members are equal parts of the board entity. Board officers do have more responsibilities when it comes to communication. Additionally, the board president is typically the first liaison to the superintendent, and then responsible for disseminating information to the board as necessary via one-on-one discussions, always keeping in mind, of course, OMA restrictions. While it is not the board president's role to make sure the board members are always on the same page in regards to decisions, because, believe it or not, varying opinions is a very healthy thing for a board, it is their role to make sure we each have the information and the discussions necessary to make those decisions and ultimately cast our individual votes. Based on all of that, it is my opinion that a board president also needs to be able to, as a baseline, have a relationship with each board member that includes mutual trust and respect.
Anyone else? No? Mrs. Setler?
You know, I know what I wrote, and I know what I meant. And I also know that that was, and I don't care if everybody thinks that it's, you know, it's going to happen, so you shouldn't do anything. When stuff like this happens, it's meant to squash people wanting to speak up. And when somebody takes your private, your private, private statement on a page, and I would have published that thing honestly, publicly, too. But I was, those were thoughts of mine that I held for private, okay? And somebody in this room tonight admitted that she got a hold of my, my post, the entire post, and that she posted, that she ended up posting it, but it wasn't posted the way I wrote it. Okay? So you guys, I mean, I, you could have your opinions, that's fine. And everybody, you know, believe it or not, I listen to everybody in this district when they speak, okay? But also, remember that there are 20,000 kids in this district with, you know, families, and there are a lot of stakeholders and everything. And we cannot ever do anything in this board just because a small group of people demand it. And over and over again, the past several, since I've been on the board, I have been called a groomer. I was trying to kill your kids. I was, you know, just not, not listening to you, that I was doing things, I was making decisions because your kids were your kids. I've never done any of that. And you can, and I've listened to, and I honestly, at this point, I'm almost impervious to it because it's been said and done so many times to me. But that's not why I wrote this, this piece. That, I wrote this piece because of my struggles, okay? My struggles with my own inadequacies. I admitted in that piece that I had a knee-jerk reaction at the beginning of this that I wasn't proud of. And I looked to do what I could do to make my, to make myself, not feel better, but make myself, help me deal with my, trying to deal with my feelings about Mr. Kirk. He was not, he sat into some awful things. And his, like, his murder. I was not happy that he was murdered. But anyway, so I wrote, I read that article, and I attached it to that, and the whole thing was that I, like, I'm struggling to make this, to make these changes and things like that, and other people I know were too, because a lot of people, a lot of people felt the way I felt, and we're dealing with, with real, real problems with, I don't know what the word at this point is, but resolving my conflict, I guess is the best way to say it. But I'm not going to apologize for that.
Please. Please refrain from comment. This is Mrs. Setler's opportunity to speak. Everyone in the room has had the opportunity. It's now her time.
I'm not going to apologize for my original post. To me, it's, it was written, it was written from my heart, and if you don't like the way it's read, that's great. You don't have to. But, you know, time and time again, people who didn't like what was going on, or liked what I said, or whatever, came to these meetings. During COVID, we had meetings like this all the time. We had people that were, that are in this room that would do things like go after LGBTQ kids in this district, go after LGBTQ employees with this district, in this district, file false police reports trying to get them fired, doing things like they're doing today, saying, they didn't say what we like, so you should fire them because it's not appropriate, okay? And I've spent a lot of time pushing back on that, and that's part of the reason that a lot of people don't like me, a lot of people in this room. I don't care. I am not here to please you. I am here to protect our kids. I'm here to make sure they get a good education. Everybody's kids. I don't care what a kid's parents' politics is. I don't care if their kid comes here and yells at me. I am interested in making sure every single kid that goes through this district at any time gets the best possible education they can. And honestly, a lot of people in this room have, over the years, have, you know, didn't think that they, that some kids in this district should get the same education that other people's kids did, okay? I've pushed on that, and I will continue to do that. What these guys decide to do tonight is not going to change any of that. But that's enough about me. My concern is what's going on in this community and this country with people selectively deciding who they're going to get and who they're going to destroy. I was, did some research. On September 14th, a man named Thomas DeVore, who was the lawyer who sued us over COVID, representing several people in this room, a failed candidate for Attorney General, posted this on his public Facebook page about me. "During COVID, D-300 threatened and intimidated families. I saw it. As such, it should surprise no one that this lady is a flaming liberal who is proudly and publicly showing her satisfaction that Charlie was murdered." I never did that, number one. "This lady is everything that is wrong in publication, public education. Children are at risk of being brainwashed with the psychotic liberal garbage as long as people like her are allowed to remain. Too far, too far, too long, the D-300 board has been unaccountable. Today, that ends." Replying to this post, another person, I'm not sure she's here today, but she was here the other day, a former client of Mr. DeVore's in a lawsuit again against D-300 and other school districts during COVID, said, "Join us in demanding Community Unit School District 300 School Board President Nancy Setler's resignation. We don't want people advocating for our children that condone shootings and/or violence against people like her." Again, I did not do that. Now, the thing that bothers me the most about this is that it is inflaming people who either don't want to understand or just don't understand, because like the one woman said tonight, she didn't, she saw something that was passed on and passed on and, you know, all this other stuff. They're not seeing my original thing, and this is being promoted like I'm, I hate Charlie Kirk, and I'm glad he's dead, and I was celebrating, et cetera, et cetera. But like I said, my problem isn't that, isn't as much about that as it is about what's happening with other people in this district. There are other people that have been attacked in the same way. They have gone, people have gone and picked up things off of people's Facebook and social media, and they've taken it, and they've tried to get them fired. They've tried to get their, like, internships, like, canceled and things like that. This is inappropriate. This is inappropriate. And it doesn't really matter if we're talking about First Amendment rights or not, and it doesn't matter, you're wrong about, First Amendment rights are only related to government. You're wrong about that. But anyway, anyway, I'll give you an example. A one-time candidate running against Lauren Underwood, which means he's from this area, said, "Peacefully find posts of every single teacher across America that celebrated Charlie Kirk's assassination. Take screenshots, take videos, send us the evidence. I don't care how long it takes, we will expose every single last one." And they would lose their job. A lot of them do.
Joe. Can you please, please refrain from adding comment to the room?
Throughout this entire thing, I've gotten, a lot of educators have reached out to me, and they're scared. They're scared that they have to, first of all, don't, don't say anything, because somebody might not like it, and they're going to come after me and try to get me fired or worse, okay? That's inappropriate, and I'm not going to stand for that. I'm not going to stand for that. I will do everything in my power to protect the teachers and the staff of this, of this community, of this district, everything in my power. And, you know, I mean, don't come after our teachers. Don't come after our staff. Don't come after our administrators. Don't come after other board members, okay? Because I'll be the first one that's going to come after you, if you do. All right? All right? What, what they? What they do, what, what, the people on this board, a lot of them are my friends, I would say everybody's my friend, okay? We obviously don't agree about a lot of things, but I will tell you right now, and I don't, you know, that's a decision they have to make, I'm not saying they don't support the teachers and everything like that, but I think one thing they will tell you guys is that I always stand up, and I always, a lot of people don't like it when I do. Oh, well, I stand up for the right people, and I stand up hard for the right people. And so whatever they do tonight, we will work it out, we'll be able to function, we will. I'm not going anywhere. So.
Hearing Mrs. Zettler's comment, is there any further discussion from the board?
Can we clarify what exactly we're voting on? Because it has been over a week, and I think there's been a lot of confusion as to what we're proceeding with tonight. I think it would help a lot if we just went over it again, just for clarification for us and for everybody.
Yes, and the next item in the agenda is action items, so I can do that when we get there, but before we move there, is there any further comment to be had in discussion? Mrs. Lindmark?
I just hope we can move on from what was said in the post, because for me, it isn't about what she said in her post. We need to move on as a community. I watched the faces in the front row. Thank you, because you guys have sat through this, some of you, for the last five years, and we aren't doing our best. We just aren't, and we can do so much better for our kids. So I hope everyone can just cool it after tonight, honestly, please.
Okay, I think that brings board discussion to a close. We can move on to the next item on the agenda, which are the roll call action items. And I can explain again the two items that are up for possible action. The first is a motion to remove Mrs. Zettler from the board president seat, from her office of president, that in no way removes her from the Board of Education. Neither of these motions will do that. As I explained at the beginning of the meeting, the board does not have the authority to do that. The second motion is a motion for censure, and that is essentially a motion that the board would consider. It's, it's a, I could equate it to a reprimand of a board member, asking her to do better and be better. And specifically, that would be based on the disruption that resulted from her Facebook comment, the disruption to the district. That's what you would be looking at there. One motion doesn't preclude you from acting on the other. Both motions will need to be moved and seconded to move forward. So if, any questions or concerns about the process, or what either of them mean? Okay, so we can begin with the first motion. Is there a motion to adopt a resolution to remove Mrs. Zettler from the presidency seat?
So moved.
Is there a second? I do have a proposed resolution that would need to be read, and I'm going to pass that down to the board, because they have not, they have not seen this. And I will read it out loud, and that's the resolution that would be voted on this evening, because the motion has been moved and seconded. After I read the resolution, we'll open the motion up for further discussion. This is the resolution the board would be voting on this evening. Whereas the Board of Education, here and after the Board of Community Unit School District 300, Kane, McHenry, Cook, and DeKalb Counties, Illinois, here and after the district, is committed to effective governance and the leadership of the district. Whereas the president of the board serves as the presiding officer, spokesperson, and primary representative of the board, and must be able to lead and collaborate with the full confidence of fellow board members. Whereas recent circumstances have resulted in the current board president being unable to fulfill this essential leadership and collaborative responsibilities of the office of president. Whereas the board recognizes that continued service of the current president in this role is not in the best interests of the board. Now therefore, be it resolved by the board that, one, board member Zettler is hereby removed from the office of president of the Board of Education effective immediately. And, two, this action does not remove board member Zettler from her duly-elected position as a member of the Board of Education, and she shall continue to serve as a board member with all rights and responsibilities thereof. And, three, the board fully recognizes the First Amendment rights guaranteeing freedom of speech and association. In adopting this resolution, the Board of Education in no way intends to infringe on board member Zettler's constitutionally-protected freedom of speech and association rights. And, four, the board shall elect a new president in accordance with board policy and applicable law. Is there any discussion on the proposed resolution? The motion has been made and seconded, I would ask that the roll call be taken.
Lindmark?
Aye.
McKenday?
Burkett?
Aye.
Lamarka?
Aye.
Amelia?
Aye.
Zettler?
No.
Motion passes.
The second motion before the board is motion to censure board member Zettler. Is there a motion to adopt a resolution to censure Mrs. Zettler? Hearing no motion, the motion would die and would not move forward. Can move on to the next item on the agenda, and that's organization of the board if necessary, because the first motion was voted on affirmatively. The board will now need to reorganize and elect a new president. Because the office of president is now vacant, the board must fill the position. Is there a nomination for the office of president?
I nominate Christine Burkett.
Mrs. Burkett is nominated for the role of president. Are there any other nominations? If there are no further nominations, nominations for the office of president are closed. As Mrs. Burkett being the only candidate nominated for the office of president, it is declared that she is elected by acclamation, and such election shall be recorded in the minutes. Now, the office of vice president is vacant. Is there a nomination for the office of vice president? Mrs. Lamarka is nominated, are there any other nominations? If there are no further nominations, nominations for the office of vice president are closed. Mrs. Lamarka being the only candidate nominated for the office of vice president, it is declared that she is elected by acclamation, and such election shall be recorded in the minutes. As a result of that election, the office of secretary is open, or vacant. Is there a nomination for the office of secretary?
I nominate Tola McKenday.
Mrs. McKenday is nominated, are there any other nominations? If there are no further nominations, nominations for the office of secretary are closed. Mrs. McKenday being the only candidate nominated for the office of secretary, it is declared that she is elected by acclamation, and such election shall be recorded in the minutes. That brings the organization of the board to a close, and we move on to the next and final item on the agenda, which is adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting?
Second.
Madam Secretary, please take the roll.
McKenday?
Aye.
Amelia?
Aye.
Zettler?
Aye.
Lindmark?
Aye.
Lamarka?
Aye.
Burkett?
Aye.
Thank you.